This conference will now be recorded.
Bruce was collecting jackets to give to school kids.
I heard that too, yes.
But they're all too big for school kids.
I wonder. I didn't hear it say it's recording.
You don't do that until we start the pledge. It's required.
It says it's recording.
It says it is, but I hope.
Yeah, usually it's seven. Okay. If we open this meeting, we will hold some pledge allegiance in the corner. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We start the debate on A, which is regular board meeting, meeting minutes from December 19th. I can't remember who was here and who wasn't. Whoever was here would like to make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
I was not here. Second. Any questions or corrections? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And item D.
Those I have to wait on because I thought I finished them today and it did not happen.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So we have to table that or we just not, we just skip?
Table it.
Do I have a motion to table B?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Table. Okay, and then item C, annual highway permit for emergency and maintenance. You're stating that's something we do every year. Do you think anyone wants to add to that or pretty routine? Routine, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, memorandum of subcontract agreement with Aga. Would you like to explain that, Jan?
Yeah, Aga manages for us for a fee, NYSERA grants. And I think this is something we've done. As you can see, they guide us through this. This is a contract that would run. Interesting because it's backdated December 20th, 2022, extended to June 30th, 2024. I think it's something we've done in the past. They serve as lead on communications between us and NYSERA with regard to grants and contracts through NYSERA, which is New York State Energy Savings. I don't know the exact word of it. And we've entered into these before and the partnership has worked well. The total amount of the grant is $151,906.
Anybody have any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorizes everything under sign. I think it's set up for Kimball's signature.
It is.
So do you want to authorize Kimball to sign then?
Yes.
I think that was what the motion was. Is that operating magisters?
No.
No?
Separate from his.
That was still NYSERA.
But he, that's, that's some, that's separate, that is not this. Yeah.
Okay, and item E, I can explain or not. Jack, you did a lot of work with everybody else. Do you want to, want to slowly start?
No, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. With our agreement with Lake Classic notification ending and subsequently them in the process of breaking up and Shree's going to the town, we sent out bids for doing this from outside vendors. I believe that Jim Gerard was the only one that applied and as such has sent us this.
His proposal, yeah.
Proposal and prices.
Yeah.
And to us, I think it looks more than reasonable. I think Jim has a long history with the campus and caring and really taking pride in what he does. And I think it will be a good fit with the village. Does anything anyone wants to add to that?
No, I would agree the fact that, you know, if, if we were able to get an employee to put on Brad's payroll to manage this, this is, I think this is going to be a savings.
Which is what, like?
So.
$105,000.
But it's for three seasons, so the initial request for information that we did four or five year months ago, it was the seasonal plantings of the spring, summer, and the fall. What's not included is Christmas. That's a separate budget, but it's also maintaining the landscaping that is, that has been done by the Main Street. Yeah, exactly. The Main Street renovation, so he'll maintain all the green space.
Weed it once a month, once a week.
Whenever it needs it. And also replenish the mulch. My only question, and I don't know if Brad had a chance, but there are properties that are outside that scope that I'm wondering if Jim's going to include, which is the triangle at the bottom of the Harbor Lane and the parks. Because there were pots, there are pots everywhere. So just making sure that it's included.
Well, and there's some leeway going on that contract as well. Right now it's quoting brand new hanging pots. I have, I mean, Greg Peacock tomorrow will see if that is still case because beautification is not disbanded. They still own the pots, the town does not own the pots, and Greg may allow us to use them.
We bought the pots.
No, we did not. We did not buy any pots. We bought small pots. Yes.
The self-watering pots, that, we did not buy those.
No.
You did not, all right, I thought you said you had.
I had an invoice for them. Oh, we had invoices for self-watering pots. But they were the smaller ones that went on the base of the poles in brackets. The brackets no longer fit the poles that we put up on Main Street. Therefore, we can't use those pots anymore.
We bought new.
I have one up in my office.
We bought new brackets.
For the, not for the pots.
What pots are we talking about?
There were two, yeah, there were two, one on each side, double. Yeah. They're only about this big.
We don't even use them anymore. Then what do we want them for?
We own them. There's one upstairs in my office right now that Shree's brought so that I can see what it looks like. But I haven't even.
Did we even use them last year?
No. Because the brackets did not fit any poles. They go, they went like this and they were, yeah. So I'm going to have conversation with Greg Peacock tomorrow with Brad to see where we stand with that. The town does not own them. Beautification's still in sight.
Okay, so to summarize all of that discussion, at this point, we're back to whether we want to accept the agreement with Jim Gerard or not. Sounds like there may be a few changes and things to just correct and bumps we haven't thought about, but all in all, it's.
I think we're going to lose some expense and add some expense and then it's all back.
And given that we haven't had anyone apply for one in job and being, this is, sounds like a great, and like I say, we, in my opinion, couldn't ask for someone better. Like I say, good reputation and lucky to have them.
Could we also just find, find out or just get spelled out? You said that it includes the mold change. Does it include the kind of the action of doing it as well as?
Yes, yeah, it does. It's in.
Okay, but it end, like, it includes plants as well or do we have to pay?
Nope.
And we have control over what mulch?
Yes. That seems like really good value.
And, and no chemicals. Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll take second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, line worker apprentice program registration. That is for?
For Jacob Corson, Zachary Ford, Noah Tavoris. And it's for the full four years, four years, right? They go to school. So this is their first year.
Any questions or do I have a motion to send them off to school? Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Item G, 2023 MEUA safety and training program registration.
That's something all our guys are required to do every year. So it's the entire department throughout the year.
Any questions there? Do I have a motion to approve? Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item H, sex crimes seminar. I believe that's for the police department, if I remember right.
Yeah, Mackenzie Fuller will be attending that.
Okay. Any questions there?
Is everyone training? This is just part of the rotation? And if not, it's, are they like?
Specific?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. This is actually the first time I've seen this come across my desk, so.
I think what I've heard from Chuck is that he tries to send everybody to everything.
Yeah.
If the scheduling allows and the class comes up when he can afford to lose somebody to send it. So yes, I think it's his.
His intention to do it.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I think in the meantime, I feel leaving would be just if, you know, if the person who attends, if other people haven't, kind of, you know, comes back and, you know, has a note or somehow shares what they've learned.
That's a whole thing, Chuck. I'm assuming you.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
STR appeals board reappointment.
This is for Christopher, don't know if I have his name correct, Santa Croce, who had a five-year term and wants to continue on with the STR appeals board.
Well, there's never been either.
Like once or twice when needed.
They're there when needed, right? Any questions there or do I have a motion to approve? Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you unpot on hockey tent that would not be on Peter's property? Do I have a motion to approve?
That's true.
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I think Peter doesn't vote for that, right?
Doesn't vote for that, okay. I probably better take these separately. Item K, driver's license number one.
That is for Celeste Kilburn. She would be working with Larry Barney. She's apparently a relative of Larry Barney's.
And Chuck has reviewed the?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, they, both of these are fine with the police department.
Do I have any questions on driver's license, taxi driver license number?
She's alive.
What's that?
No. Just why would someone do that, but that's okay.
It took her forever to do, like she, she started this policy.
Go and feed on her traveling plans.
Well, that just, Larry, Larry didn't even know that she had gotten this far. He's like, oh, she finally brought you an application, so.
Have we issued a, the license to Larry?
Yeah. Um, we, we, not for the year, but we, we redid him through, re.
The end of the month, end of January, right?
Yes, yeah.
So how can we?
Because his license was extended in January.
All right, so we're approving people, but he may, he's going to expire and. He, he, well, he has his paperwork and Chuck has to, from his, yeah, but.
Where is Mark?
And there's other drivers for him that only have a re.
Only his granddaughter, who also I have her paperwork. They always come in at the same time. Yeah. To Mark, to our knowledge, those, those are his only drivers.
Any motion? Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then driver's license number two, did that end up coming out in that whole discussion or not?
This is Bernie Stevens, who already drives Uber apparently, but wanted also to have an official Lake Classic Taxi Driver license, so.
Crossed.
And he was fine with, with the police too.
Yep, once Chuck said he was. Motion to approve? Moved.
Second.
And any questions or any? Okay, all in favor? I understand many of us have, just would like some more time due to the World University Games. For item M, the Lake Classic volunteer department bylaws. It's not something we had to approve, but just have a chance to read, see if there's any questions. So at this point, if it's all right, table, it might ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Is that a record two things tabled in one night or? It's high tide, but.
I think so, I think so.
Okay, let's see. 2022 Town and North Village Village of the Classic History Report. Did all of you read it?
Yes.
I thought she brought some very nice things to the table. I called her up, had a half hour discussion with her about a nice job she was doing. But not mistaken in there, it mentions Ida Lockwood started this and then it went to Mary McKenzie and then to every now Karen Fallon. But thank you very much for doing it. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Any questions?
Just, I think, yeah, really hopeful, interesting.
Yeah, nice, nice thing to have, nice to have someone keep track of Lake Classic history. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anything else from the clerk?
Uh, yes, so linked on Friday, Kathy Swazza sent a whole bunch of change orders, but apparently we need Brad already familiar with them. It's all a done deal anyway, so the question is how we want to handle it. There are some that were for MCJ Construction and others for William J. Murray. I don't know if you want me to read all of them, to do it as one lump, to do it as. Janet, is there any way we need to, we're required to do this?
The.
Say how we're going to pick for it, isn't it?
Yeah. They were all just, they're very minor modifications. And normally when Ivan does a change order, he'll put everything into one change order. Kathy does all of them individually so that you can read each description. She's very meticulous.
Yes.
She's nothing against it.
Yes.
But they're very small dollar amounts. And it was either we couldn't get a piece of equipment, so we got a different brand and it cost a different amount. Or when they had the slamming, knocking, whatever it's called.
Here.
Hammering, there we go. There were some additional things that needed to be purchased and some additional time that needed to be had there in order to fix it, so.
So it's all watered away.
Yes.
So.
What is the small amount?
Yes.
What is the largest small amount?
What is the total changes?
I haven't seen them all.
She didn't total it, neither did I. I had it all individually, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I could just run through them if you want.
Or if you could just give, just give us a quick total of how much it is and if it's. I mean, I guess it kind of really comes down to we can either table it so everyone can have a chance to read it or if we think that you guys.
I can't see it being more than $20,000, to be honest with you. Well.
Yeah, I'll total them out. Total them on your phone.
We'll come back to you, how's that?
For me.
Okay.
That was my last item. And whether they're coming out of the grant or not.
Okay, and then.
Well, maybe they're coming out of the, of the short-term financing for the grant.
Well, we're giving Mindy a chance to total. And like I say, we can always wait if we feel we need to. Treasury items, the only thing we have there is forms of affidavit number 11. It's mine, just to enjoy it. It is, isn't it? Any questions on that? Or do I have a motion to approve? Sub moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Anything else from Treasury while you're at it?
Yes.
Want me to go on and come back and talk to those?
Total of some contract costs $80,000. There's a summary.
Oh, okay. Is that just for the one company or for both?
Uh, no, it's for all of it.
Okay.
She has a long sum written in, so it's $80,000 or whatever.
Okay. Okay, so I guess now the next question would, what is the board's pleasure? We can table that, I would assume. It's not going to hold things up terribly. Everyone wants to read it or we can accept that Mindy has taken a look at this. Who else?
I'd like to read it.
Okay, so I'll email you exactly what you emailed, which is everything.
Okay.
I can email to all or you could like just see how it. Well, all of, like, it's, it's like eight attachments to one unit.
One big attachment, so.
Yes.
What, I think that, you know, kind of, the other question is what, like, there's the amounts, but then there's also the, just the context about the budget.
Well, there's the, there's always air for change orders. I mean, Ivan's total change orders were almost a million and a half, or was over a million and a half, close to $2 million in change orders. There's always going to be modifications, there's always going to be changes that need to be had. The short-term financing is being increased anyways to cover. The grant only goes so far. It's not going to cover the whole thing. It was never expected to cover the whole thing. We got equal parts, grants, and the short-term financing, so. It will be covered by the SRA financing once we get final numbers back to EFC. So it's time to move on.
Well, you can't possibly put everything out there that you need done because you don't know what they're going to find.
No, absolutely not. And they had chemical variances that had to be done and just modifications to the contracts themselves.
You save us supply chain issues and having to go to different parts.
Are you going to have to do a new bond resolution then?
We have to do one anyways. Because the original one is lower than the total estimate that we got. And EFC will approve it until we're at the final take.
So if you're going to pay for that out of a bond resolution, you have to pass the bond resolution before you can authorize payment of that.
It can be paid out of grant funding for right now. We don't have enough money in total to cover the entire project for right now.
Right, but I was saying if the bond resolution, short-term financing, doesn't cover this and you're going to spend that money, you have to have the resolution in place before you can prove.
Okay.
That's, that's all I'm saying, right?
Didn't we increase the amount already?
We did. Well, we put out for it and then they said that we even have the water tank figures and Kathy hasn't finished the water tank figures. She's been too busy on the filtration plant. So until I have those numbers, I can't process it.
Remember to do this all over. They should both.
So we're tabling this?
Is that a problem?
Well, I think you need, I need, you need the resolution for the funding in order to.
We can't do the bond resolution till it's.
Until I write the number, I don't, catch 22. So table it for now and I will pester Kathy to get it pushed there.
Okay. I have a motion to table. Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a, yeah. It's okay. And we're all done with.
That's it.
Anything else from the clerk?
Yes. I sent out an email to everybody about the new law that was signed by Governor Hopele about the 10% reduction in property assessment for volunteer EMS and firefighters. You have to be in the department for two years. You have to reside where you're, you have to reside in the area in which you're covering.
Does that mean you're linked with fire district? It would have to be village for us, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Well, yeah, in our case scenario, because of our taxes.
And the town, it has to cover the people, the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we use the same assessment.
But they would have to agree to it, correct? Because it's going to come out of their budget.
I'm just saying.
Well, no, our taxes are our taxes. It's their assessment, yes, but.
We use their assessment role, so.
Right, but if we approve it in our taxes and say that in accordance to our taxes, we can send it, in accordance to what I talked to Derek about. Derek said they don't necessarily have to approve it, but for it. If it work on our level, we have to approve it since, yes, they issue the assessments, but we can put towards them that we're giving them a 10% reduction. They also have the opportunity for the $250 tax credit on the New York State income tax and it's one or the other, they can't do both.
And shouldn't this be in their bylaws? I mean, I, I didn't get it yet.
No, it's New York State.
I, I get it, but it's a benefit of being a member in good standing.
Is the $250 income tax credit in there?
I don't know. I'm only because I haven't had a chance to read it, that's why I'm asking that question. If you have to be a member in good standing to get that credit, so.
The only reason I bring it up is because the local law needs to be passed and public hearing needs to be done before March 1st.
But I'm just wondering though, should it be included in their bylaws? And if anybody, I did not read the bylaws, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's a good point that it's like, you know, where, where this official list comes from.
There, there is a section of, I think part of their bylaw changes are the definition of member in good standing.
Yeah. Well, in accordance for this, you have to hit certain points. So that you have to have a point system, you have to get 50 points in order to qualify for this.
And who sets up the point system? The fire department or us?
Me. The village?
Yes.
Oh. What?
It's, it's in part of the local law.
That we have to, the local law?
They can go off their point system if it's number of calls or whatever else.
I'm confused, okay.
Okay, so I guess at this point, we do have the deadline of the end of February. So we do have some time, but I think what we really want is to bring this up that it's happening. Do we want to pursue this? We could find you, we'll talk to you whenever, but I think. I think we set a public hearing today basically to make this timeline work, if it's March 1st.
But you also have to, I assume you want to know how many properties would it affect? What's the, it's going to be option.
Yeah.
Probably two.
Really?
In the village?
EMS and fire, right?
Our could only qualify for fire. I mean, EMS would have their own set of codes and laws, but I don't think EMS, because we don't have any jurisdiction over their bylaws or anything like that.
Is it fire police considered active?
That would be in their bylaws, you have to look.
I, well, so there's, there's, so, there's not many volunteer firefighters that live, that own a property in the village.
So I think we'd have to get a list of all the people and see who.
But, all right, so I, I have a rude, a rudimentary understanding of this. So if somebody lives in the village, they, if we pass this, then they can have the, either of the two choices. If they're in the town, the town would be responsible for that.
Yes.
On their tax rules. So it's something they can do too, so.
But the $250 credit on income tax, that's not part of our local law.
No, that's, that's.
When they can do one or the other.
Right, they can't do both, right.
So all we're looking at is the possibility of extending a 10% reduction in assessed value on any property that certain firefighters or E, or EMS people own in the village.
And you have to be a member in good standing for at least two years before you qualify for this. And it has to be the primary business.
Yes. I mean, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nice.
I don't care how we do it.
Governor Hopele put it out for retainage purposes and I literally found out about it Thursday. So this is all to have.
And we don't have any idea of like what they're suggesting from this point system.
They, so number of calls, but I think it needs to be stipulated if you call in on a call and you don't actually go to the call, so that you get the I am responding thing. Oh, they call the, the department all the time and say, oh, I'm on my way and then the call is canceled, so they get their credit. You can also include trains. So if you are.
So Tori and the fire council need to be made aware of this so that they monitor what a member in good standing is.
Which I know they have.
They do.
Something in their bylaws that states it. And I think Last Conversation.
They don't have a point, they have a percentage or they've used a percentage, not a point system.
And Last Conversation, I have in Tori, they had 12 members that were actually, yeah. Out of the entire.
And maybe this.
And that would have been only one.
It's kind of like, wait, he was in the village, too. Yeah.
Are we just saying maybe this will encourage more people? I mean.
Well, and that's why Governor Hopele put it out, was to try and get in retained volunteers.
Yep. And what did, what did we figure out on the $300 home and wood safety?
Just like $1,800.
$1,800, yeah.
Is it village alone?
Yeah.
But you know, that's.
This is village, not school tax or.
Correct. So can you get 10% off your school and your village? Or your, your town and your village?
No.
Oh.
Just your village. I mean, if the town.
If the town does it, so.
All nice.
So we have to put the info out because we have such a shortage.
It doesn't, it's a total, so any property that's in the village.
It's because it's 10% of the year assessed value.
Also gets a town tax bill that they get 10% off.
To 270, you didn't pay taxes on that. It's going to be like, it's not a lot of money. Mindy, you got your numbers right? Are saying you.
Yeah, if it's a 10% reduction in assessed value, go to 270. And that's what you pay taxes on, so it's not $1,900, it'd be like $18,000.
Oh, and we were figuring it on the actual tax amount, not the assessed value, that's why.
Yes, so it's going to come out, hopefully it's not going to come out something insulting.
Well, and that's why when we were talking originally, I said they have the option of one or the other because in some cases the $250 is better than.
So what was it? 10% reduction on $300?
Is that the assessed value?
Going on the tax rate. I don't know. Tax rate, I was talking about.
And so if instead of 300,000, it's 270 and the tax rate is $10, it's not very much. I mean, our village tax rate isn't that much, very low.
Back to being insultingly, it's too bad.
Yeah, it's not. So one or the other.
They'd be better off in most cases to take the $250 credit.
Okay, so if that's the case, would it be worth bothering with a 10%? Okay, well, if we do all of them.
This is, this isn't a one and done. I mean, if you want to do it for, to be effective for this year's village taxes, it has to be by March 1st. But we could always do it after March 1st for future tax years, correct?
I don't know the answer to that. The conversation that Derek and I had was that the county had a deadline of March 1st. I don't know the answer to that, the conversation that Derek and I had was that the county had a deadline of March first. That was the overall, that was the state deadline, the county said their deadline was March first because of when tax rolls come out.
Would it make sense to allow you time to look into that more fully, but we, can we make some kind of motion for a public hearing, but then call it off if it doesn't look like it's worth it? I just don't want us to run out of time.
Can't advertise a public hearing without.
See, I've already said that.
A lot of, and I don't have to write.
Yes.
I hope, but I'm not sure what I would write right now.
But you still would have time the next, because we don't really need how much, is it ten days for a public hearing?
Yeah.
So it would still give you an extra four days, I mean, just so we don't run out of time, anyone got a suggestion or it'll be, we're to work on next year?
Well, let's find out if, I, I can't believe this is a one-shot deal.
I couldn't either, but that's what I was originally. So, so yeah, if we could check that, and I think also it'd be good just to, just run the numbers and just confirm kind of the, the quantum that we're dealing with. And maybe, you know, pick like, you know, mid-range and then, and then, you know, double that just to, just to give a, a sense for what the tolerance is.
And you do look into it, it's something we've got to move on, we can always hold a quick emergency meeting hold just for that and get it, get it through, so.
But I think we should have time, because it's, it sounds like something pretty simple that like, we're not gonna have a room full of people in a public hearing, we're probably gonna have a public hearing, nobody will show up, but we can approve on the same night, in a little like a point.
Emergency system. Jim has.
Well, I mean, well, that's what I'm saying, exactly, yeah, yeah, so we have. High term, a member in good standing, and it's meeting to set something.
It's January, not January, February seventh. Jackie, I think that.
Cause a member.
Yeah. Do we figure out like imperants of that, do we, based on our connection to Tori and G R D, we can, they give it now.
Well, they, they do a percentage, the number of calls, I think you have to, you have to respond to fifteen percent of the calls to be considered a member in good standing, then.
Governor Hopele signed this first.
How many, any for that?
Um, right, so it does.
I literally got the.
That seemed like a sensible.
Like is it Thursday?
Percentage, not if they have to do, if it's being mandated, they have to do a point system.
Could we?
Well, we've got time, two weeks.
Yeah, let, let me read the law that's being.
We'll use that as a point system, so we can just, we can always.
Cause you're gonna be bored now.
I don't think so.
I'm afraid that you're bored. Alright, so we've at least got a couple of weeks to.
Okay, I gave out the any reconciliation and collateral statement for the month of December, uh, because I don't have January statement yet. Um, normally you guys review and approve.
The collateral.
Yeah.
I think it's cause for celebration that we, uh, Mindy came into this with a kind of, records will say that we're way behind and it's taking you all this time to get caught up in this one, blessings of COVID, that you took that time during.
I got COVID this month, and that's why I got caught up.
No, congratulations, it's never easy. Thank you very much. Positive step forward, anything else from?
Oh, I think you have to have a motion to approve the collateralization.
Yes.
Okay, we, we finished up on the fire.
Yes, I'll continue to work on that.
Very good, do I have a motion to accept collateralization? Moved. Second, on the page.
Bye.
Okay.
Now you have one more thing, it's just to put everybody on notice that, um, I will be bringing it to the next administration meeting. Um, the rates for the electric finally came in. Um, I got them from NICA last week, I've done the figures on them, so I have a ballpark on what our net gain will be overall. Based on the timeframe that, um, I put in, but I did a year's worth of sales at the old rate and the new rate to see what difference would be and what's lost in the beginning of that week.
Be sure to report that works.
Yes, um, so I will have that for you at the next board meeting, but I do have a case and you want to review it.
Well, and that's another area that.
Yes.
That's another area that spent a lot of negotiating and making sure.
Been like five years.
Yes, making sure we got it, and then we had some of those brand new with the negotiations on the other end and they did very difficult. But once again, thank you very much for all your work there, a lot of work. Did we, did we decide, was it always six the last time the rate was increased?
Yes.
Something we all should know. People.
Yes, and we started this process, I'm not kidding, and I say four and a half years ago. Um, and. Yeah, and the regulator that we had to do our rate case, um, was brand new, we had never done it before and we got landed with three of them at once. Um, he came back to us a couple of different times and because our P P A C calculation has been flipped for thirty years, thirty-five years, um, he wasn't taking it into consideration, it kept slipping his mind when he was coming back with rates, so we get a lot of back and forth. Um, and I will say I'm happy with where the rates have landed, so I'm happy to do this.
So we were paying point zero four cents a kilowatt for.
Point zero.
For household.
Oh, no, so we were charging.
Point zero.
Point zero three, three.
Point zero three three.
Uh huh.
What's it gonna go up to now?
Point zero three six. It's not huge influx.
Ten percent leverage across the board. Well, and it's unlike water or sewer when you need to increase because you've got expenses or you're running behind, you can just do that with electric, it has to go through this process.
Yeah, but right.
But you better have it in place, you better build up.
Yeah, so the, the net overall is seven and a half. Well, if we need, if we need international comparisons on this, I think it's incredibly big.
Yes.
And that's.
Well, so how could the P P A C where?
My right, yeah, I said it in a territory, yeah.
When the P, but I thought the P P A C was always based on demand, and so if demand is higher.
P P A C is not based on demand. P P A C is based on overall consumption.
At the highest of the previous month.
Overall consumption is divided, you take the overall consumption and divide it by all the bills, it's a past, that's all it is. So we take all the bills for our utility, NICA, National Grid, uh, vehicle loans that go through NICA and the ZEX, which are state regulated, and that gets divided by the total consumption and the purchase power cost. Which is, and then we add the one mil adder for the I E P, which is how you get your. Well, yeah, that's part of it.
Say that again.
So everything we pay for to get electricity, everything included in NICA, so our Tri-Lake Agreement, which is a loan we have through NICA, we have two vehicle loans through NICA, which are minimal. Um, they were the zero percent financing loans for the electric vehicles that the Electric Department got. Um, and the ZEX, which are state mandated charges, that total then gets divided by the total consumption, so. What we pay.
The total kilowatt consumption.
Yes, so what we buy in our hydro, what we buy in incremental power, and what we buy in the manpower, all of that together, divides into that.
Right.
And then we add in our purchase power cost and subtract out the.
Why are two vehicle purchases included in this?
Because the loans are through NICA and it's a past. But there's no interest. Correct.
Those are the two RAV fours.
The two RAV fours and a forklift.
So that was just new then, these RAV fours were new this year, last year?
Last year.
So the, and the forklift, so we had never had the vehicles.
No, NICA has a electric.
Program.
Program where you can purchase vehicles through. And then you add in your one mil adder for the I E P.
Well, now it's two, right?
No, it hasn't passed yet.
Oh, it hasn't?
No, we passed the fact that it could go up, but, um, I E P has not.
Okay.
NICA with that, yeah.
Does this affect P P A at all, or is that totally?
No, the P P A decreased because the calculation changed.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
But what, so what's the net effect? With the rate going up and the P P A C going down, are people gonna see a change?
They'll see, they're gonna see a change, but the vast majority of the change is gonna be seen by large commercial, and if you go over five thousand kilowatts on your residential.
This is where Jason would say, Peter, that's you.
What does the demand rate change? For not only commercial businesses or large commercial businesses, but for the arena as well.
The demand's gone down for the arena.
The amount of demand, yes, but the dollar amount has changed.
So we have four rates, four rates now?
Large, small, commercial, residential, and.
Three things? We've got six different rate categories. What are they? Large commercial, small commercial, residential, streetlight.
Streetlight?
People own streetlights.
Who owns a streetlight?
I used to.
Arbor Lane owns streetlights, Pine Hill, streetlights, Beech Hill, then those are all private streetlights that they.
You don't have one?
We do, we have.
Anyhow, that's four.
Yeah, um, the arena has its own rate class. And then there's public lighting, which is the lighting that the village has that we calculate and then take off of our contribution to the general fund.
Does that include meters and other things that draw?
It's just the meters on the actual streetlights, so all the lights within the village doesn't include like parking meters and other things in our electricity.
Okay. No.
No.
What's the difference between a large commercial and a small commercial? What, you mean, just give me a, Crown Plaza, large commercial, uh, Wildwood, small commercial. Is, is that?
Is that base rate or?
No, no, I just, no, no, I've just.
How do you get, how do you?
How do you determine what a large commercial is?
Oh, usage, so three months over five thousand kilowatts, you move into large commercial, twelve months under five thousand kilowatts, you move back to small.
Usage, okay. Does it fluctuate within the year depending upon your usage, or if?
It could.
So if, if the golden arrow was shut down because of renovations and wasn't using.
He would have to be shut down at below five thousand kilowatts for twelve months before he gets put back into a smart.
For twelve months. What happens when?
And then tell us yours.
What happens when you go over, do you go?
So if you go over for three consecutive months, you get pushed back into a large.
Yeah. And do you stay there until you're?
Yes.
Forever, oh, twelve months.
Until you have twelve months of usage under five thousand.
Okay. Okay.
Guess we don't need to discuss it during the meeting. We're good right here.
Do you bring the shit going down with all their electric rates?
They have, but they'll never, as long as those ice rinks are going, they're never gonna be under five thousand kilowatts.
Well, then you have a dehumidifier that never worked before and does now, that's another electric problem.
Yeah.
But I'm here to attest, when you're sitting in there, it's very pleasant.
In where?
In the arena, I mean, if you didn't have that dehumidifier, you'd have the moisture, it would feel cold and damp. I mean, you could basically, or I was sitting up there, you type.
Actually, I quote off.
Yeah, sitting in it.
But body heat also plays.
Didn't hurt, did it?
No, no, what I'm saying is if the arena was half the amount, you, you would have been cold, so, yeah.
Okay, anything else to discuss in the future meeting, would you get it all cut now?
No, I'm good.
Is there anything needed to come out of that, or you're just informing us?
I was just informing so we could have further discussion at the end of the meeting, that's the rates that come in.
Good. Good, and then we'll surprise you after that, we vote on it at the board meeting and then.
Yes, we'll vote on it and then.
How long until?
It has to go to NICA for their quarterly board meeting, so they have one every quarter, they don't have one every month. And as long as we agree and they agree, they will send us the information back and we can move with the rates. So we're looking.
That's right.
Yeah.
And the last part of that, correct me if I'm wrong, that's part of the reason we started a program of upgrading our infrastructure was to help with this rate.
Absolutely, yeah.
And not only did it benefit us, like Beaverville Road, getting the transformers turned up and all that, beyond.
It took all of our capital debt into consideration so that we could cover the cost. So the substation behind the firehouse was a big one, that was over two million dollars. Um, all of those expenditures got taken into effect.
What about the substation in the arena, was that part of the plan too, was a new substation?
I think the arena.
So it's owned by, it's owned by.
Yeah, it's not ours.
It's owned by.
I don't think so, because why does Kim?
We did work for.
Yeah.
Oh.
But we own all the plants at the Bobram. Or to just own it, we own.
Well, or to pay for it, it's all contributed to us, just like.
Right, but we.
Just like the arena.
Right, just like the arena, we own it because it's all contributed to us.
Is it actually a substation?
That in particular, I don't believe so, it's a, a vault and.
Switch gears.
Yeah, switch gears, I don't think it, it's just to power that.
It's just two circuits that feed it, in case one fails, making the switch up, only the other one's only activated.
I just see that the invoices, when they come in ask what they're for, I think it's switch gear, yeah.
Two years ago, it was gonna have an engineer, or the order was gonna have an engineer, new switch gears that are, you have to manually do, they don't, they don't.
Right.
But I don't know what happened to that, it was long ago.
I know they got the plans, just like the Bobram had gotten their plans and then.
Any more questions? Once again, thank you, you know, that was a lot of work too, did that also help out with COVID or not?
No, that's just that process.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, any new business? Old business? Come on, Steve. Mayor items, uh, I guess it's, a lot of you have been very involved in what's going on with the World University Games, but some of the top benefits, if you want to look at it from New York State's, aside from all the people I talked to, they're very thrilled with what happened in their investment. The FISIA people are very thrilled with what happened and having put their trust in us to hold this. Lance, the president said, he's trying to be very diplomatic, when we think of the United States and New York State, we don't have a favorable opinion, he said, you've all been very nice, and a lot of people are going home with a very different attitude, opinion, which worldwide will help us. The coverage that's been going around worldwide and the publicity we've got is invaluable, will serve us for many years. Improvements to all the venues will keep us going for at least thirty more years. Um, and all of that, and of course, the, from all the press releases that you see, the press has been very favorable for us. Channel Five's camping out here for two weeks was very helpful for our local area. And, um, I mean, it, it's been a few negative people and comments, but I think the overall picture, if you look at everything for a tourist town was very, very favorable, they know a lot of people put in a lot of hard work, especially to a lot of the village employees that had to be out until eight o'clock this morning. Getting the street ready to be opened back up and Brad's trying to get them home so they can get some sleep, so if snowstorm comes, we have people that stay awake. You know, everyone.
Get drenched when I get home, you didn't get drenched until thirty, you went in at nine o'clock, I was like.
But you know, it, it goes into everywhere, the police department, the electric department, all the people, we had people come and stand by from other fire departments just in case something happened and, I mean, it's, it's, I was supposed to sit and write a list down, if I could, I had to cross freezers before we moved, so I got taken out of that job. But you know, even right down to the state police, I talked to a lot of them, they're all, they all can't wait to go home to their families, you know, they've been all here. Just so many lives disrupted, I remember past Mayor Craig Randall, when people would ask him, how does a whole village like this do what you've done? And the answer is, everybody pulls together, you know, and traveling for the village since I've become mayor, especially with the people from Italy that I just went to, Mayor Russo had one million two hundred voters under his command, and he controls the Department of Tourism and all the things that we have to work together on. And it makes it very easy for him because he's in charge of it all, but here we all have to agree and work hard, work together. And I think that's quite a feather in our cap that we can do it, they talk about shared services, we ought to be the poster child for it. But, for all those of you that are dead and zombie, we do it pushing it. Anyone have anything to add? I know I've seen a lot of you out in the different venues I kind of have. Did I already say it all?
Thank you, it was great, and I think the positive, uh, positive comments all the way around, athletes were amazing. I'm really impressed with the kind of engagement of the school kids as well, that was.
Who are in the future.
Yeah, really great to see, um, and I can say that I got, uh, texts and WhatsApp messages from friends in Europe who were watching your sports. And I didn't even tell them about it, they were just, you know, they're like, oh, I'm watching my class at right now, would you agree?
You touched upon that, the athletes that I saw, they were all very happy, I think a lot of them had a good time. And did you have a good time, can you say to Mix Master Mike?
I loved it, it was great.
You and I were there.
Were you there? So you weren't up in front of the stage like I was, I think I lost half of the hearing I had left. So you weren't up in front of the stage like I was, I think I lost half of the hearing I had left.
And I understand the drone show was fantastic.
Yeah.
If you could see.
The D P W, from my understanding, is the only ones that saw it, apparently, something got confused with how high the state police or the FAA would allow them to go, and getting them from the beach where they had to stage over, but I can't confirm it, I don't believe we're being charged for the drone show, because it didn't end up where it was supposed to be.
Do you wanna see it go on Brandon Montag's Facebook page?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's pictures, yeah.
I I understand that they, the drones all made a skier.
Oh, yeah, it's incredible.
Need that, weaving.
Which is a crime, because all those people that were up in where they pushed them, but you know, if that's the worst that happens, we're lucky people, but I'm saying.
I'm saying if you replace the fireworks on Fourth of July with that.
I was curious to see.
It's it's incredible, it's just incredible. Dogs like it better.
Dogs like it better, environmental like it better, the light.
Big bucks, though.
Yeah, it's really big. How how much in comparison to fireworks?
Fireworks are at about twenty, drone shows, about seventy-five.
Can we bring it back, since we just didn't see it?
We're like, what is the budget?
Any other comments, or did that? Very good, I'm gonna consider that, good enough then, how about commissioner reports? My understanding is that the water plant, they've resumed, and they're still on, hopefully they'll be on target by the end of March to have the other half done. And this will go much quicker, because they did a lot of the groundwork before, they know what they're doing, but they more than ever.
They're doing that.
Yeah. So that's good news. And you know, that all comes right back to the World University Games again, I mean, a lot of things, doors were open to us, we jumped on it, we got a lot of work done, and those doors aren't always open, so. Real service, getting a lot of everything done. You know, one online, athletes, you, like, I think we gave you a lot of stuff to figure out. Whoa, okay, very good. Did you get out and enjoy the World University Game?
I don't.
Or did they have you working too hard on it?
Yeah, it's always worse, but it was fun, I was.
Well, good, okay, if there is nothing else to come, um, motion, anything else from anybody? Motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
That's always handy.
Right, but I would, we know what we get.